Mr. Wolf here. Mr. Chapman here. Mr. Ferrinella. Mr. Giannakis here. Mrs. Miller. Mr. Pedder.
Here.
Mr. Cecilberg.
Here.
Mr. Cassio.
Yeah.
Mr. Panisi.
Here.
In accordance with the terms of the Sunshine Law Act, the rules were posted in all school buildings, the administration building, borough clerk's office, public library, three newspapers, and tablets on January 8th, 2024. Please be advised here is no smoking on school grounds and set or outside at any time. Please silence all electronic devices pursuant to District Policy Number 0167. Each statement made by a participant shall be limited to three minutes duration and no participating will speak more than once in the same time.
Thank you. We're just going to change this up. We're going to hold off on the public budget hearing until after we have the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Panisi. As you can tell, we have an awful lot of students and parents here from Kennedy School. And I mentioned Dr. Hyde is on his way and studying some traffic, so we're just going to rearrange our presentations. I'm going to ask Mr. Yatizzi if he would go on up to the podium. Mr. Yatizzi is going to be presenting our wellness report for the year.
Thank you, Dr. Tansy. Good evening, everyone. The main objective of the 2324 Wellness Committee was to create a cohesive football system for our districts to present new school building in the districts. Together, we aim to implement all aspects of the health of school programs. Throughout the year, the Southlinfield Wellness Committee held three meetings. During these sessions, we discussed the district's school service program, health and physical education programs, and the existing wellness policy. Our initial step involved reviewing the content of our current policy, which effectively reflects the essential work we consider part of our mission. This is our school's compliance with policy requirements. We utilize the state mandated wellness policy assessment tool to conduct an annual wellness survey. The assessment results for each school, along with the related documents regarding the wellness policy, will be accessible on our website under the Parents section. Looking ahead, our committee aims to strengthen collaboration with stakeholders, including students, parents, teachers, and community partners. We advocate for increased physical education requirements, healthier meal options, and mental health resources as part of a holistic approach to wellness. In summary, we will continue to continue our work as a wellness committee emphasizing student wellness in terms of nutrition, physical activity, and overall health. Additionally, we plan to expand our focus to include mental health and involve staff, parents, and families in our mission. If anyone is interested in participating in the Wellness Committee, please feel free to contact me. My contact information is available under the District Wellness Section on the district website. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Panisi. Appreciate that. We also have listed in our agenda tonight a number of athletes who are doing all of their winter sports in their recognition. They are not here tonight because we are fortunate enough that our athletes, many of them are multi-sports athletes, so they're out doing either practice or participating in the game, but we wanted to acknowledge them within the agenda itself. So it'll be posted for all of the Southlinfield public to see it. At this point, I would turn it over to Kennedy School.
He's here.
He's here. But right when he comes in, we'll give him his hands.
Good job.
Good for you, John.
Dr. Hyde, do you need just a moment?
Just a minute. I'll set up the computer and we'll be ready.
Okay. That's all right. Matt, would you help Dr. Hyde out?
Good job. Good.
All right. Without further ado, Dr. Hyde will...
Right on.
There you go. Dr. Hyde will be introducing all of his amazing students from Kennedy School. He'll be talking about some past activities and an amazing, exciting upcoming activity.
Thank you so much, Dr. Tansy. Members of the board, it's a privilege tonight, and thank you for your patience. I know our young students have waited a long time. They practice a lot, and they're very prepared. So without further ado, I'm going to introduce three very powerful women at our school. These are our executive board to our student council. Joella Willis, if you could come on up. Leah Curlew. And Taylor Betsy. So these three are going to lead the task of leading our school as our members of the board. They lead our school, and they are our true testament to leadership. I want to tell you about some of the things that we accomplished. One activity that we're looking forward to presenting this year, and then I'm going to come back on and represent or talk about some other very important students in our school. Take it away, Joella.
Good evening, Dr. Tansy and all members of the Board of Education. My name is Joella Willis. I'm a fourth grader at Kennedy School and the Student Council President. At Kennedy School, we learn many amazing things from our awesome teachers. Tonight, our school wants to share some of the highlights from our school year and show you how proud we are to attend our school and be a part of our wonderful community. Before we get started, I will read our Kennedy School motto. I come to Kennedy School to learn. I believe that I can be a good student. I will work hard each day to do my best. I can learn. I will learn. And most importantly, I will treat others as I wish to be treated. This motto is read every day during our morning announcements. It is important that all students understand this motto because it helps us to remember that we must always be respectful to others and that we are supported by amazing staff that helps us learn each day. Throughout each day, students are the main focus at Kennedy School. Besides learning to read, write, and do math, our teachers help us to be successful and prepared in a global and diverse society. Tonight, some of the students from Kennedy School are here to speak about some events we are proud of at Kennedy School. Here's Leah to tell us about two of these events.
Good evening. My name is Leah Curlew. As a fourth grader and Kennedy School Vice President of the Student Council, I am honored to be here tonight to speak to you on behalf of our school. Similar to what Joella said, our school staff definitely makes us focus on learning every day. I personally cannot think of a better place to learn and grow than Kennedy School. Outside of the classroom, we have been given the opportunity to see how our support for the community can change lives. One of these ways was when our school participated in the Middlesex County Food Pantry Drive. Our school decided that because we are an elementary school, we would help the pantry by asking the students to donate unopened cereal. In the end, the school was able to donate over 600 boxes of cereal to the pantry. We lined up these boxes outside and did a school-wide donut open. It was great to see our work have such a large response. The cereal box was lined the entire sidewalk at the back of the school. Another fundraiser that we are very proud of ended last bracket. For the past three weeks, the students of Kennedy School have raised over $2,600 for the Leukemia and Lymphomia Society. This is a very important fundraiser for our school because we have staff members, parents, and even students who are battling cancer, and we want to support them. In today's world, success goes beyond personal gain. Acts of donating cereal to the food pantry and raising money for the Leukemia and Lymphomia Society to show how much Kennedy School students are making a difference in the world. By helping those in our local community facing food insecurity and supporting research for a global health concern, we contribute to a more just and healthy world. These actions demonstrate an understanding of what is taught at Kennedy School relating to the well-being of others. At this time, I would like to introduce Taylor, who will tell you about an important event coming up that we are planning at Kennedy School, and we want you all to attend.
Hello, everybody. My name is Taylor Betsy, and I am also a fourth grade student at Kennedy School. As the Secretary of the Student Council, one of my responsibilities is to find ways to help our school learn more about each other and its bridge diversity. Did you know that our school is a real mix of cultures? We have classmates from all over the world. There are even some students with backgrounds from more than one place. In our school, we have a super diverse group. I think it's really cool to learn about different cultures and traditions from my classmates. It makes Kennedy School a fun and interesting place to be. Last year, we began a tradition at Kennedy School to learn about various cultures throughout the school year. Thanks to our great teachers, our school hosted a multicultural night for our school community. We had over 40 tables set up with various artifacts and food from around the world. There was even live performances. It was a huge success, and we thank Mr. Pedder and Mr. Cecilberg for being part of this event. This year, we are planning a bigger and even better event. Please mark your calendars for our second annual Kennedy School Multicultural Night, which will take place on Friday, May 31st, from 5:30 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. Let's hope we get good weather like we did last year. This year's event already includes 15 different nationalities, three performances, and great music from all over the world. At this time, I would like to bring back to the podium our school leader, Dr. Hyde, to close out our part of this meeting.
Okay, so you can see why these are wonderful representations of our school. They speak very well. They do a lot of great things, and some of the stuff that they just talked about, they actually organize and let, so including our multicultural night that's coming up. So I want to just add to this part of the presentation by recognizing some very important kids that just went out of their way after school with their principal, believe it or not, to learn a little bit more about math. It's called the No Ed Learning Math Contest, which I introduced last year to our school. This year, we had the opportunity to have not just one team, but we had two. And I want to just talk about some of the reasons why we think this is important at Kennedy School. The No Ed Math Contest is a semi-annual, so it does take place a couple times across the country. Our school district has participated in it one time, and it's in our spring semester. It's all about problem solving. So everybody knows problem solving is the way of life. We problem solve every day, and our kids get that knowledge not only in math, but when we work out some of the math problems, we talk about life and how do we stop some of the problems that they're faced with in their ordinary lives. Problem solving helps students to become better mathematicians, better thinkers, therefore better equipped for advanced STEM learning. Mr. Fosco is looking forward to that when we get him up to this high school, so we want to start him very young. The goal of the contest is to develop students' problem-solving skills to encourage their interest in math and to inspire them to excel in all parts of life. Tonight, I have the opportunity to recognize some individuals. Up here, third grade team, we had 14 students, and out of those 14 students, we have our top scorer who's going to receive a medal tonight, and that is going to be Noah Fernandez. So Noah, if you can come on up.
Noah Fernandez, this is his first year because this is our first time that he's able to compete with us. He scored the top scorer in our competition with a score of 60, which is wonderful. So in a minute, you're going to shake up his hands. Your left should just stay right up here. Okay? And in fourth grade, we had 19 students. And if you remember, last year, we had 24 students in third grade compete. So these are the same students, most of them, that came back for a second year, and we have the same team winner as we recognized last year, and that's Arav Patel. So come on up here, Arav. So our first two-time winner, Arav, we're very proud of you. Arav had a score of 70 on his test, so he did a wonderful job, and he was one of the leaders of our group. So stay on up here. And we had the privilege this year of having three students in our fourth grade recognized nationally as a top 50% scorer in the entire country. And when I say that, there's over 30,000 students that compete in this contest, and we wait patiently. I know the students can attest to this. We wait until everybody takes their test so we can see how we score. We had three students. They're all going to receive purple ribbons that say No Ed Math Contest National Honorable Mention for 2024. So those students, first, come on up here, Ben Walzak. Our second student is Avery Zanikas. And our third student, again, our top scorer in fourth grade, was Arav Patel. And last but not least, we have one of our instructors, and she's our very own Student Council Vice President. This is Leah Curlew, so we want to recognize her, too. Leah spent every day after school as much time as the rest of the kids, helping me help them. And as a leader of our school, I think that's great to recognize tonight to a group of leaders in our district. Leah helped not only solve the problems with the kids, but also helped explain the problems at the students' level, and I thought she did a wonderful job. So let's give her a round of applause. And that concludes our presentation. We wanted just to give you a short snapshot of what we do every day outside the realm of our classrooms to give back to our community and recognize the students that are very important to all of us in this room. So let's give him one more round of applause.
All the students up there, the participants here will be receiving certificates. We're going to have a small celebration after school, so all the students, 19, fourth graders, and third graders, get all the participation certificates, which is a nice thing to do. Thank you.
I do want to say something because we always, they always blow out. We don't have a chance to talk about the students, and you guys don't get to hear us. But I have to tell, tell you guys did, your presentation up there tonight was phenomenal. You could tell that you guys practiced. There's no doubt about it. And one of the things that, as somebody who speaks for a living, I will tell you, I was so impressed with the fact that you didn't say "up," you didn't say "um," you never stopped, you never stammered. You guys put the effort in and practicing. Your enunciation was spot-on. I can't compliment you guys enough for the presentation that you guys did tonight. I hope you're as proud of you as we are, that's for sure. And congratulations to the math kids. That's phenomenal. You know, you guys did a great job.
Great job. I'm not going to try to do dumb. Okay, he's good. Great job. It's very impressive to watch you up there, be able to say what you did in front of us, in front of everyone, and just a terrific job. Great job, Kevin, also, and all the faculty. Thank you.
Thank you.
So at this time, I need a motion to open the 2425 Budget Public Hearing.
So move. Second.
Go, Paul.
Yes, can you say, did you want?
Yes, you guys can leave. You can stay for this. It's very exciting.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Okay, so we're not going to be able to write that. We're going to have Catherine, who presentation person.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Tansy, Ms. Malesk, and Board of Ed members. My name is Catherine Viper, and I'm the Junior Class President here at SPHS. Recently, my time has been spent with the SPHS track team during discus. I actually just got back from the GMC relays. A few of my classmates and I, on behalf of the student leadership, participated in a beach cleanup at Manaswan with the program Clean Ocean Action, which was really fun and rewarding. Now onto information about the students. This past Thursday, April 25th, was the Spring Concert. We congratulate the students and staff who contributed to an evening of song and music. On Saturday, Southlinfield High School's jazz band competed in the TIA Region Jazz Championships. The members received an outstanding achievement and placed third. Furthermore, the trumpet section received the Best Trumpet Section Award, and soloist Brooke Ridley won an Outstanding Soloist Award for her performance of At Last. On Sunday, the SPHS Winter Guard Team won first at the TIA Winter Guard Region Championships, which is a testament to the team's hard work and creative vision of the head advisor, Alessandra Greco. NJSLA's testing began yesterday, April 30th, and will end on May 3rd. Students in ninth grade will be taking the appropriate ELA math courses. Eleventh grade students will be tested on the appropriate science courses. The sophomores and some seniors are lucky they have a week of delayed openings. Next week, the week of May 6th, AP testing will begin and continue through May 17th. Good luck to all the AP students. I personally will be taking the AP World History exam and the AP Psychology exam. Tiger Farms will be open again on Wednesday, May 8th. All staff members of the community, all staff and members of the community are welcome to stop by, as they will have seasonal flowers, spring decorations, baked goods, and more for sale just in time for Bub Day. Cultural Heritage Day will be May 21st, and we will run an all fell schedule. This day, on behalf of the Jersey and History Club, is a day where students can bring in food, artifacts, and put on performances from their culture. I, along with the rest of the students, really enjoy the day to learn and try new things. Day of Service is scheduled for Friday, May 24th. Southlinfield has many things planned for students, such as cornholes, basketball, and basketball tournaments, a color run, walk apart, and more, all of which raises money for different charities. The junior class runs the basketball games in Spring League and raised money for the Ronald McDonald House. The senior prom will be held on Thursday, May 30th, from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. at the Grand Marquis at Old Bridge. Tickets were on sale this past week. The seniors are excited to wind down for the school year. Lastly, I don't want to make any junior parents sad, but the class of 2025 has senior portraits in the building with Laura's Photography and Jim from the 19th to the 21st, and the 24th and 25th, with appointments starting at 8:00 a.m. and the last appointment at 11:30. Information was sent to parents or guardians directly from Laura's Photography Studio. There's a lot going on for students here at SPHS for the next two months, but I know I can speak for my classmates when I say we cannot wait for summer to come.
How'd you do on the review?
I think we got second. I'm pretty sure. But I threw a D3. I was like, okay.
Are we going to move on to the budget?
Okay. I have a motion to open public hearing.
So move. Second.
Mr. Pope.
Here.
Mr. Chapman.
Yes.
Mr. Ferrinella.
Yes.
Mr. Giannakis.
Here.
Yes.
Mr. Pedder.
Yes.
Mr. Cecilberg.
Yes.
Mr. Cassio.
Yes.
Mr. Panisi.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Panisi. This evening, we are going to be presenting the school year 2024/2025 school budget. It's taken a very long time to put this budget together, taking in all the information from our administration, our curriculum directors, Ms. Malesk as our Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum, and of course, from the Board of Education, that wanted to prioritize many of the items that are in our budget. So we wanted to make sure that we are focused always on what's best for the students. I know that you are aware that we had lost some funding this year. We created the best budget that we could based on the shortfall that we had and some reallocation of projects that we had planned for. And listed up there are a list of Board of Education members and our mission statement, which is very important to us as a district. We have allocated our district funds the following way: for facility projects, technology, instructional programs, special services, school security, equipment, and personnel, athletics and extracurricular, transportation, and capital projects. These are all the things that we need to make our school district run efficiently and effectively for our students. Our district priorities, and a priority of our board, was to maintain our class sizes at the elementary level, the middle school level, high school, as well as add an additional English as a second language teacher into our budget, although we do have a number that are currently in our school budget. As our population continues to grow, we have to address that by adding additional teacher in that area. We have increased course offerings at Southlinfield High School, and we're maintaining all of the current instructional programs that currently exist in our curriculum. We're maintaining our support programs, including our academic tutoring and our summer credit recovery. And in addition to that, we will be maintaining our student enrichment programs with our summer programs that will be listed shortly. Our district priorities also include funding mental health, personnel, and programming in order to fully support our students. We're continuing with our mental health support programs, our nature and heart approach with the Dreams Grant, and our comming room monitoring staff will all be included in our funding. We're also increasing our course offerings at Southlinfield High School, which include Fundamentals of Mathematics for the Trades, Essential for College Mathematics, AP Human Geography, Rhythm and Language, and the Marching Band Expansion. We are also expanding through Phase Two our district preschool program. Our preschool teachers, we're hiring a number of new hires for our preschool teachers for our classroom. We're also adding an additional art teacher and additional physical education teacher. We're also hiring a number of preschool paraprofessionals, as well as a number of duties to support the preschool program. Our preschool expansion at Roosevelt Annex Building will include renovations to the new wing of the administration building, which includes renovating six existing classrooms that are down the hallway in our administration building, with an addition of two new classrooms being built in the gymnasium. All of the bathrooms will be updated. We'll have an updated HVAC system. We're replacing the fire alarm system in that, in the preschool program. In Roosevelt, we're upgrading our security system, replacing the LED lighting. We have a roof project going on, and we are rebuilding the facade of the building. The facilities project also include another roofing project that's at the Roosevelt Elementary School. We'll be doing district paving throughout the district, so we're repaving the Riley Annex Teacher Parking Lot that was not paved. We're pulling it up and paving. We are doing various sidewalks replacements, and the middle school kitchen project, the front service counter area. In addition, we are also doing district painting in the Roosevelt Preschool Annex, the interior classrooms, the hallways, the gymnasium, and then various classrooms throughout the district. We're also doing general maintenance throughout the district, which includes asbestos removal in multiple buildings, general building maintenance, LED replacement projects throughout the district, HVAC maintenance throughout the district, and we are maintaining all of our athletic fields throughout the district. Our technology projects include a number of projects that we're working on. We're increasing the security cameras at the Roosevelt Preschool Annex, and we're expanding security camera coverage in the existing school buildings. We are improving our network infrastructure by replacing switches in the entire district and wireless throughout the entire district. We're upgrading the Roosevelt Preschool Annex cabling and their door access security, and we're upgrading the building access control system. In addition, we are switching over to the OneSync system, which is an automated staff accounts for computer access from the HR system, so it eliminates a manual input, and ClassLink installation, which is a single dashboard for district applications and a multi-factor authentication for students. Our instructional programs, we are expanding the recruitment and retention efforts for our faculty and staff. We are planning district recruitment events and partnerships with local colleges and universities to recruit and retain the best possible teachers we can for our district. We're designing student programming in response to identified academic and social and emotional needs. They will also be funded. We have a number of instructional programs that are connected to curriculum, including curriculum writing. We will be rewriting curriculum and updating to the standards for K-12 Social Studies, Intro to Computer Science in Computer Science, Fundamentals of Math for the Trades in Math Electives, and Essential for College Math, as well as Race, Culture, and Gender, and Rhythm and Language. We will also be working on Social Studies, K-5 Social Studies Weekly, our World History in Grade Six, our I actually just got back from the GMC relays. A few of my classmates and I, on behalf of the student leadership, participated in a beach cleanup at Manaswan with the program Clean Ocean Action, which was really fun and rewarding. Now onto information about the students. This past Thursday, April 25th, was the spring concert. We congratulate the students and staff who contributed to an evening of song and music. On Saturday, South Plainfield High School's jazz band competed in the TIA Region Jazz Championships. The members received an outstanding achievement and placed third. Furthermore, the trumpet section received the best trumpet section award, and soloist Brooke Ridley won an outstanding soloist award for her performance of At Last. On Sunday, the SPHS Winter Guard Team won first at the TIA Winter Guard Region Championships, which is a testament to the team's hard work and creative vision of the head advisor Alessandra Greco. NJSLA's testing began yesterday, April 30th, and will end on May 3rd. Students in ninth grade will be taking the appropriate ELA math courses. Eleventh grade students will be tested on the appropriate science courses. The sophomores and some seniors are lucky they have a week of delayed openings. Next week, the week of May 6th, AP testing will begin and continue through May 17th. Good luck to all the AP students. I personally will be taking the AP World History exam and the AP Psychology exam. Tiger Farms will be open again on Wednesday, May 8th. All staff members of the community are welcome to stop by, as they will have seasonal flowers, spring decorations, baked goods, and more for sale just in time for Bub Day. Cultural Heritage Day will be May 21st, and we will run an all-fell schedule. This day, on behalf of the Jersey and History Club, is a day where students can bring in food, artifacts, and put on performances from their culture. I, along with the rest of the students, really enjoy the day to learn and try new things. Day of service is scheduled for Friday, May 24th. South Plainfield has many things planned for students such as cornholes, bike walk, and basketball tournaments, a color run, walk apart, and more, all of which raises money for different charities. The junior class runs the basketball games in Spring League and raised money for the Ronald McDonald House. The senior prom will be held on Thursday, May 30th, from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m. at the Grand Marquis at Old Bridge. Tickets were on sale this past week. The seniors are excited to wind down for the school year. Lastly, I don't want to make any junior parents sad, but the class of 2025 has senior portraits in the building with Laura's Photography and Jim from the 19th to the 21st and the 24th and 25th, with appointments starting at 8:00 a.m. and the last appointment at 11:30. Information was sent to parents or guardians directly from Laura's Photography Studio. There's a lot going on for students here at SPHS for the next two months, but I know I can speak for my classmates when I say we cannot wait for summer to come.
How'd you do on the review?
Um, I think we got second. I'm pretty sure. But I threw an E3. I was like, okay.
Are we gonna move on to the budget?
I have a motion to open public hearing.
So move. Second.
Mr. Boe?
Here.
Mr. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrinella?
Yes.
Mr. Giannakis?
Here.
Yes.
Sure.
Mr. Pedder?
Yes.
Mr. Sesselberg?
Yes.
Mr. Casio?
Yes.
Mr. Penisi?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Penisi. This evening, we are going to be presenting the school year 2024-2025 school budget. It's taken a very long time to put this budget together, taking in all the information from our administration, our curriculum directors, Ms. Malesk as our Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum, and of course, from the Board of Education, that wanted to prioritize many of the items that are in our budget. So we wanted to make sure that we are focused always on what's best for the students. I know that you are aware that we had lost some funding this year. We created the best budget that we could based on the shortfall that we had and some reallocation of projects that we had planned for. And listed up there are a list of Board of Education members and our mission statement, which is very important to us as a district. We have allocated our district funds the following way: for facility projects, technology, instructional programs, special services, school security, equipment and personnel, athletics and extracurricular, transportation and capital projects. These are all the things that we need to make our school district run efficiently and effectively for our students. Our district priorities and a priority of our board was to maintain our class sizes at the elementary level, the middle school level, high school, as well as add an additional English as a second language teacher into our budget. Although we do have a number that are currently in our school budget. As our population continues to grow, we have to address that by adding additional teacher in that area. We have increased course offerings at South Plainfield High School, and we're maintaining all of the current instructional programs that currently exist in our curriculum. We're maintaining our support programs, including our academic tutoring and our summer credit recovery. And in addition to that, we will be maintaining our student enrichment programs with our summer programs that'll be listed shortly. Our district priorities also include funding mental health, personnel, and programming in order to fully support our students. We're continuing with our mental health support programs, our nature and heart approach with the Dreams grant, and our calming room monitoring staff will all be included in our funding. We're also increasing our course offerings at South Plainfield High School, which include Fundamentals of Mathematics for the Trades, Essential for College Mathematics, AP Human Geography, Rhythm and Language, and the Marching Band Expansion. We are also expanding through Phase Two our district preschool program. Our preschool teachers, we're hiring a number of new hires for our preschool teachers for our classroom. We're also adding an additional art teacher and additional physical education teacher. We're also hiring a number of preschool paraprofessionals, as well as a number of duties to support the preschool program. Our preschool expansion at Roosevelt Annex Building will include renovations to the new wing of the administration building, which includes renovating six existing classrooms that are down the hallway in our administration building, with an addition of two new classrooms being built in the gymnasium. All of the bathrooms will be updated. We'll have an updated HVAC system. We're replacing the fire alarm system in that, in the preschool program. In Roosevelt, we're upgrading our security system, replacing the LED lighting. We have a roof project going on, and we are rebuilding the facade of the building. The facilities project also include another roofing project that's at the Roosevelt Elementary School. We'll be doing district paving throughout the district. So we're repaving the Riley Annex Teacher Parking Lot that was not paved. We're pulling it up and paving. We are doing various sidewalks replacements. And the middle school kitchen project, the front service counter area. In addition, we are also doing district painting in the Roosevelt Preschool Annex, the interior classrooms, the hallways, the gymnasium, and then various classrooms throughout the district. We're also doing general maintenance throughout the districts, which includes asbestos removal in multiple buildings, general building maintenance, LED replacement projects throughout the district, HVAC maintenance throughout the district, and we are maintaining all of our athletic fields throughout the district. Our technology projects include a number of projects that we're working on. We're increasing the security cameras at the Roosevelt Preschool Annex, and we're expanding security camera coverage in the existing school buildings. We are improving our network infrastructure by replacing switches in the entire district and wireless throughout the entire district. We're upgrading the Roosevelt Preschool Annex cabling and their door access security, and we're upgrading the building access control system. In addition, we are switching over to the OneSync system, which is an automated staff account for computer access from the HR system. So it eliminates a manual input. And ClassLink installation, which is a single dashboard for district applications and a multi-factor authentication for students. Our instructional programs, we are expanding the recruitment and retention efforts for our faculty and staff. We are planning district recruitment events and partnerships with local colleges and universities to recruit and retain the best possible teachers we can for our district. We're designing student programming in response to identified academic and social and emotional needs. They will also be funded. We have a number of instructional programs that are connected to curriculum, including curriculum writing. We will be rewriting curriculum and updating to the standards for K-12 Social Studies, Intro to Computer Science and Computer Science, Fundamentals of Math for the Trades in Math Electives and Essential for College Math, as well as Race, Culture, and Gender and Rhythm and Language. We will also be working on Social Studies, K-5 Social Studies Weekly, our World History in Grade Six, our history licenses are updated in Grade Seven and Eight. They're upgraded again in Nine through Twelve, AP Government and Law, AP Human Geography, AP Psychology. Music, we're doing sound innovation with smart music. Council and Department will have a new program called Score, which will replace Naviance. Mathematics, we'll be having our resources for Grade Six, Fundamentals for Math for the Trades, Essentials for College Math, Precalculus, and Calculus. English will be using resources in Rhythm and Language, Business, AP Macro and Microeconomics, and Computer Science, Intro to AP Computer Science. In addition to all of that, funds will be allocated to provide training based upon the District Professional Development Needs Assessment Survey and the District Goals. Our district initiatives and ongoing topics include data analysis and data-driven instruction, targeted subject and grade-level specific content, addressing diverse learners in the classroom, multi-tiered system of support, instructional technology using AI, and cultural consciousness and responsive classrooms. These are all things that we're focused on. Moving over to our Special Services Department, we are maintaining all instructional programs pre-K through Grade 12 and including transition. We are maintaining our staff program for autism. In our autism classes, we're expanding with one additional class to Roosevelt Elementary School, expanding from five elementary classes to six. We're establishing an LLD severe program at Franklin Elementary School. We're continuing to expand vocational living experiences for students in the high school and for the 18 through 21-year-old Transition Academy. We will also be increasing the number of trained and certified staff for the multi-centering reading in all of our schools. We'll continue training programs to foster students' seamless transition to adulthood, so the person-centered approach. And we are doing audio enhancements from Epic Systems, which we will be enhancing 22 classrooms for our students that may have some difficulty hearing. We're also projecting increases in our Special Services Department based on our out-of-district tuition and transportation. For the 2024-2025 school years, projected for our out-of-district tuitions and transportation to be approximately $4.7 million. This includes an estimated 5% increase for out-of-district tuition and a 15% increase for out-of-district transportation. We will continue to expand programs in the district to meet the needs of students by maintaining a full spectrum of educational program options for our students. In the list up here, I won't read them all. Our number of special education programs that we have that are available in the district. So Ms. Malesk, may I just switch to our funded programs? Special services funded through local funds as well as the IDEA grant. Grant funds defray tuition costs and related supplies. Where local funds support programs, tuitions, and transportation. Our local funds continue to support special services programs, tuitions, and transportation as necessary to service the students in the South Plainfield School District. We are continuing to maintain our security in our schools. That is one of our main focuses, to make sure that our students are always safe and secure when they're here with us. We will be maintaining our district-wide school resource officers, our SROs. District-wide, we have a total of three. They are responsible for our onsite security. We are increasing our district's SLEOs by one, so there will be six preschool elementary SLEOs joining us in September. We are also doing exterior door access controls. We're updating the door access control systems to work with existing camera systems and Mape sensors. And the preschool annex's security will have a new security vestal built inside there. In addition to all the things that we're doing for our students here, we're also making sure that our students have a well-rounded education by maintaining our athletics and our extracurriculars. Our athletic budget supports 61 athletic programs. Currently, a total of 1,195 students participate in both the middle school and the high school program. Many of these students are multi-sport athletes. Our district funds are allocated for the following: our coaches' salaries, our cost to the officials as per the state and conference recommendations, our yearly dues, our rental fees and entry fees, purchasing of new equipment, equipment maintenance, equipment repair, and the replacement of equipment. We also use our funds for safety as we maintain and repair the items that we just discussed. We do reconditioning and replacement of helmets and equipment, safety checks and repair on the gymnastics equipment, sanitation of the wrestling mats and their equipment, concussion testing, and our swim coach certification. In addition to our athletics, we also do extracurricular and clubs that are supported by the district budget. Extracurricular activities and clubs budgeted for the 24-25 school year include our elementary student council and safety control, through which we still are here tonight. Our grant school funds are Literary Magazine, the Advisors and the Assistants, the Chess Club, the Student Council, the Academic Bowl, and the Drama Club. Middle school has National Junior Honor Society, Major Space, Odyssey of the Mind, the School Newspaper, the Science Club, the Chorus, the Yearbook, the Drama Club, the Student Council, and the Seventh and Eighth Grade Advisors. The extracurricular in the high school are probably too many to name, but they're listed up there. We have a number of extracurricular activities and clubs that are maintained for the 24-25 school year. We have not eliminated any club due to budget. We may have eliminated a number of them due to lack of participation, but they're replaced with other ones that are requested by the students. So just take a look. We have a number of them up there. Our extracurriculars are funded as per the agreement between the South Plainfield Board of Education and the South Plainfield Education Association. There are 79 cited positions in our budget. Transportation also includes for the 24-25 school year, as we discussed. The projected out-of-district transportation cost with an increase of 15%. As the cost of our out-of-district routes continue to increase, the exact number required for the coming school year is yet to be determined. But please note that our district will be returning a number of routes back to our local district budget. Our capital projects include the roof replacement at the Leonard Tobias Administration at Roosevelt Preschool Annex, Elliott Roosevelt School proper. They've already started. The funds for these projects, well, the plans started. The funds for these projects will be a combination of local funds and the regular operating district ride grants. The South Plainfield School District was awarded a ride grant to offset the roof construction cost, and we have been approved to receive 40% of the projected cost. I'm gonna pass over the rest of this presentation to Mr. Benanti, our business administrator, to go through the numbers.
Thank you, Dr. Tansy. The total operating budget is, for the upcoming year, will be $75,524,490. The general fund tax levy increase for next year is $2.7 million, and our total general fund tax levy is $56.6 million. Included in the budget is a 10% increase for our health costs, as is projected by our insurance broker. And as Dr. Tansy mentioned, we are doing some maintenance for next year, and we anticipate to withdraw $400,000 from our maintenance reserve to cover that. And as everyone knows, we lost $3,569,185 in state aid. Included in our budget, the special ed costs are increasing, and I predict it to increase 10% for next year. We have an average daily enrollment of 3,523 students. We have 661 current full-time employees. And the estimated cost per pupil for next year is $19,188. This is just a chart that breaks out our total budget. Our total budget is $83,302,519. That includes the general fund, the special revenue fund, which is grants and our pre-K program, and our debt service fund, which pays off our existing debt. This is a chart that shows you all our expenditures or appropriations for next year. If you look, our total salaries and benefits, which include taxes and health benefits, make up 67% of our budget, which is about 2/3. So next year's tax increase. The total tax levy increase is $2,699,729. That will be an average tax increase of $29, which compared to last year was $19. This increase is based on the average assessed homes value of $124,710. And included in our budget is $200,000 for tax relief. This is year four, the final year of the district's four-year tax relief plan. I just wanted to cover some areas that were affected by the decrease in state aid funding. We had to reallocation of funds before relocating the guidance department area at South Plainfield High School for the creation of new classrooms. The middle school full kitchen renovation was scaled back. We had to redesign and downscale new classrooms at the Roosevelt Preschool Annex. We transitioned to state-rerequired transportation mileage. We have a delay in purchasing maintenance and buildings and grounds equipment. We have a delay in purchasing a new 54-passenger bus. We are reallocating fund balance, and we are adding bank cap into the budget for next year. And please note, Bill A4161 is currently pending. This bill is intended to provide relief to districts who lost state aid in the coming school year. The South Plainfield School District lost $3,569,185. Depending on the outcome of this bill, the final numbers for our school budget are subject to change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benanti. I just wanted to say, as we finish up presenting the budget, I really do want to thank our Board of Education, who were adamant in making sure that any change that we had to make to the budget that we had prepared prior to learning that we had lost our state aid. We were instructed to not touch any program that would affect our students. So just so that you know, the top priority of the board here was to make sure that the loss that we had of our state aid would not be felt by our students. So I think that delaying our projects is not something that we wanted to do. It's something that we had to do, but these students will not be feeling that.
Thank you. At this time, though, are there any public comments on the budget? Seeing none in Board Member?
Yeah. I just want to say thank you to the superintendent, Assistant Superintendent, their office, the business office, all the principals, and everybody who put in time to this budget, because it is a very difficult procedure. Being cut the money we were cut made it that much harder. So I just want to say thank you for all that hard work.
Yeah, I also wanted to commend Dr. Tansy and her staff, and Mr. Benanti and his staff for putting together the budget, not only with the constraints of the reduction in state aid, but also with the general rise in costs of everything else. And to put together a budget like that that maintains all the offerings for the students and still keeps our district growing, both in building construction and programs for the students, I think that's just a phenomenal job. And I'm sorry you had to be under those constraints. And I'm sure you would have done more if you had it. But thank you for the work that you did.
I think it's important for the public to know right here, but the absurd process that it is to develop the school budget. The way it works is you need to develop a budget, assuming that you're getting a certain amount of money you don't know. And your budget needs to be submitted to the county in March. You don't find out until March how much state aid you're gonna get. And then, when they turn around and they do something as ludicrous as cut our aid by $3.6 million, whatever the number was, and then you need to turn around and, at that point in time, adjust your budget that is due in a week. What's the budget? $75 million? A $75 million budget that now you have to scramble behind the scenes and try to put it all together requires endless, you know, hours of commitment by our business office. Quite frankly, probably hours that they shouldn't be required to have to do on their own personal time because of this ludicrous way that they go about providing the school districts with funding. And then they come out with this bill where they say, "We still don't know what the outcome is going to be." Where maybe they'll, you know, reimburse some of the school districts that lost money. But maybe not. They're not really sure. They were supposed to vote on it last week, if I, right, last week they were supposed to vote on it?
They voted, they're supposed to vote on the 9th. Now it's the 13th. But I was told today I'm not even sure if it'll be.
Right. So now, go ahead and do your budget. We might give you this money back. We might not give you this money back. Go ahead and try and run your household like that. Let's see anybody do it. Let them run a school district with a $75 million budget. So I urge everybody to reach out to our legislators and, you know, our representatives and tell them the correct way that they handle funding the school districts. And, you know, you can't let a school district know in March that you are cutting their budget by $3.6 million and say, "Good luck to you." And by the way, we're not the only place that got it. A lot of districts got it a lot worse than we did, but it doesn't matter. You get a cut, you get a cut. And the only people who suffer for that at the end of the day are the students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just for transparency purposes, if Bill A4161 is passed, we could get up to 2/3, so about like $2.3 million back, correct?
Well, it's possible. It's possible. We could also get a lot smaller amount. We have no idea at this point. We're not sure what we will get, if anything.
And also, Devo, for transparency, if we're gonna get that money, we have to throw more liability on top of the taxpayers' dollars. It's the tax. The only way we're gonna get it is a requirement. If they give us part of the funds back, we have to tax the residents in order to do it. So that's what they're, you know, that's what they're looking to do, is they're gonna say, "Okay, you know, we'll give you a little bit more money, but go ahead and hit your taxpayers more if you want." Any other? Any other questions? All right. On that note, I'd like to have a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Roll call.
Mr. Boe?
Yes.
Mr. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrinella?
Yes.
Mr. Giannakis?
Yes.
Mr. Pedder?
Yes.
Mr. Sesselberg?
Yes.
Mr. Casio?
Yes.
Mr. Penisi?
Yes.
Okay, at this time, it's all pursuant to Open Public Meanings Act that the board meets in closed session. At this time, it's those confidential matters pertaining to personnel, student matters, and attorney-client privilege. Yeah, there it is. It's further resolved that the matters discussed in closed session shall be made public as soon as the meeting comes down, so it no longer is discussed.
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Boe?
Yes.
Mr. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrinella?
Yes.
Mr. Giannakis?
Yes.
Mr. Pedder?
Yes.
Mr. Sesselberg?
Yes.
Mr. Casio?
Yes.
Mr. Penisi?
Yes.
Okay, moving out of exec, we need to add an agenda item. Marks and Rita is going to curriculum as D.
Resolved that the board affirms the finding of H.I.P. case number 260441-SPM-0215024 heard during this evening's executive session, and be further resolved that the families should be provided with a written decision along with information about their right of appeal.
So move.
Second.
Ballot paper?
Aye.
Not opposed. All right. Can I have a motion on approval for our boardman to save the?
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Boe?
Abstaining. I was not here for that meeting.
Mr. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrinella?
Yes.
Mr. Giannakis?
Yes.
Mr. Pedder?
Yes.
Mr. Sesselberg?
Yes.
Mr. Casio?
Abstaining. I was lost. I'm not gonna really.
Mr. Penisi?
Yes. Can I have a motion on curriculum A through D?
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Boe?
Yes.
Mr. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrinella?
Yes.
Mr. Giannakis?
Yes.
Mr. Pedder?
Yes.
Mr. Sesselberg?
Yes.
Mr. Casio?
Yes.
Mr. Penisi?
Yes. Can I have a motion for finance A through KK?
About personnel?
So move.
About personnel?
Personal.
Did I just do personnel?
No.
Sorry.
Did I just say, did I miss personnel?
Way too many. Have a motion A through E on personnel.
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Boe?
Yes, but abstaining on Part C, line 426. That is my spouse.
Mr. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrinella?
Yes.
Mr. Giannakis?
Yes, abstaining on my family.
Mr. Pedder?
Yes.
Mr. Sesselberg?
Yes.
Mr. Casio?
Yes, abstaining on my brother.
Mr. Penisi?
Yes. Now moving to finance A through KK.
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Boe?
Yes.
Mr. Chapman?
Yes.
Mr. Ferrinella?
Yes.
Mr. Giannakis?
Yes.
Mr. Pedder?
Yes.
Mr. Sesselberg?
Yes.
Mr. Casio?
Yes.
Mr. Penisi?
Yes. And going through the last page. Okay, any public comments on any item? Seeing none? Board member comments on any item? Seeing none? Motion to adjourn?
So move.
So move.
All clear?
Aye.
Roll call? Thank you.
All right.